Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, I'd like to call the workshop to order. It's 5:04 on Thursday, the fourteenth of March. Our topic today is the draft of the lighting ordinance. And what I'm hoping we can do is just run through the city versus county copies and talk about any discrepancies and make any changes that we need. I'm really hoping we can get done with this tonight and get a public hearing on this and send this on to council. So I do have some minor differences between the two, if you want to, if I can start with that and then we can go from there.
Sounds great.
Okay. So I'm going to reference the city one first. Obviously, everything in the city draft has county references to it, which need to be changed to City of Moab instead of Grand County. So that's, that kind of follows throughout the entire document. There is a part on the third page under fifteen point two eight point oh two oh E. And it says, "All existing outdoor lighting that does not meet the requirements of this chapter and is not exempted by this chapter shall be considered a non-conforming use or part of a non-conforming structure subject to amortization schedule outlined in section something," and we don't have that section.
Tell me exactly where you're at again.
So I'm on page three, just above the bug lighting.
Mine doesn't say pages.
Mine doesn't either, but I labeled them. So it's just above the bug light picture.
Okay.
E.
Are we looking at the same document?
I don't know.
No, I'm looking at a different one, too. I'm looking at the one that was linked to in our agenda from this week.
Okay, so let me get that one up.
Which is GC Draft Lighting Ordinance 1.8.19 as recommended.
Okay, and so, does your document start with?
Yeah. Where'd it go? Oh my god, I have too many windows open. It starts, "Proposed changes to land use code after lighting and sign."
So I don't have that at all, so my notes are in trouble.
Because I have that provision roughly. It's in scope and applicability.
Right.
And it's C here, and it does have the section.
Okay, good. So I guess I have a very old one. Okay.
Yeah, this one still says county, though. So you're first.
So now, so now where are we at? What page?
It's still page three. It's on the bottom. It's, it's C on page three of the one that we were given in our packet.
Got it.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the next thing I have is a small one, but under the definitions, under net acre.
Which is under the graphic showing CFL standard and halogen. It's easier to reference that way. I think, maybe?
Yeah.
Is it going after C or before C?
Looking for definitions.
Section? Are we still on?
Definitions, fifteen point two eight point oh four oh.
Very different documents.
Wow. Okay, then I may not be able to lead this conversation for very much longer.
Yeah, this is...
You guys have no better definitions?
I don't know if we were sent.
No, better definitions.
They're in section six point six three.
Yeah, net acre.
Okay.
Net acre.
Net acre.
I see that, yeah.
It's gross acre excluding rights of way, natural slopes greater than thirty percent, or section of wetlands, lands in one hundred year flood plain, public drinking water supply sources.
So yours does say thirty percent slopes. Okay, then that's set.
You happy with that?
Yeah.
I'm wondering what version you have.
I don't have any idea. It might be one of the original ones that we looked at when it came across our desk months ago.
I think it is, because this one's twenty eighteen, and then what we have is the one that passed the county.
Sorry I didn't update that. But the next one is lighting hours. And we've talked about moving the curfew down from midnight to ten.
Yes.
And, okay, that's six point six point six. Packet document, I think.
Yes.
Okay, right here, so it's till twelve o'clock midnight.
Right, and we have talked about moving that down to ten PM. And we need to kind of come to a consensus on that.
I, I'll, my pitch for ten PM is that the, the ordinance as written already provides for businesses that are open past that point. And I think a lot of the problem we have with nighttime lighting is going to end up just being signs and illumination on businesses, just, you know, the stuff that they leave on at night, just so people know they're there, which a lot of businesses already don't do. So I don't think we're going to have, I don't foresee a ton of pushback from local businesses about this just because a lot already do shut off all their lights and their signs and everything at night. But this would kind of cover anything that isn't safety of guests or customers, which again is a pretty wide standard, as it's written. If you really have a concern, I think you can fit under that umbrella. And then things that are open past ten PM, they're already provided before. So, yeah. That's my rationale for that.
Does that include advertising?
This is commercial establishments.
Yeah.
So businesses.
So businesses.
So if you have a business and you're closed at ten o'clock or before ten o'clock, you have to have, that sign's got to be out.
It says, "Shall turn off all outdoor lighting except listed below by what we would say would be ten o'clock."
Yeah.
Unless you're open past ten, you can leave all outdoor lighting on until one hour after the close of business. Lighting to illuminate the entrance to the commercial establishment or parking lot and pathway lighting required for safety of guests or customers.
Yeah.
So that would include their business sign?
Mm-hmm. That's what I call the advertising sign.
That would include the business sign.
Seems like that's going to get some pushback.
Yeah.
Well, it is just two hours from ten to midnight, and the people who are out searching for businesses, are they really doing that at eleven o'clock at night?
Look at the ones that just stay on.
People that arrive late to town, yeah.
Yeah.
But if those businesses are open, those lights can still be on.
Yeah.
Oh, so like a hotel with a night auditor is considered open?
Right.
They're open, yep. But that would be like a real estate office with an illuminated sign that closes at six PM. Their light couldn't remain after ten, be something like that. But this wouldn't, I mean, hotels are open, you know.
Twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gas stations are open, grocery stores open till midnight, they get to stay.
I mean, I like it. I'm thinking that those who have a restaurant, they're going to want to have advertising on that sign even after ten o'clock. Right? I mean, I'm just saying that.
They might, yeah.
Might want to, so.
They shouldn't.
Hey, I'm against, I'm, I'm for non-lighting, I'll tell you that.
That's our purpose, is to shut them down, so.
So they can still have lighting to illuminate the entrance to the establishment and parking lot and pathway lighting. Those are the exceptions.
As safety type thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, you know, you could see someone trying to pick a lock on a building or something.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we might, we might very well get pushback over that. We will have, there will be a public hearing, you know.
Okay.
The council will be considering this, and if that's feedback, they, they can amend it. I'm comfortable leaving things a little more restrictive coming from us, though, because they do tend, things tend to go the other way rather than...
Yeah, I was thinking of what would actually be effective in achieving a dark sky, and saying by ten o'clock that would be effective.
A service station that has, the office is closed.
Yeah.
But you can use a credit card.
Their canopy lights are still on.
Considered to be open?
Yeah, their canopy lights are still be on. Becky, any comments?
When does the, when does it begin? When can they, I guess when they're open again?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just thinking of that. No, I don't.
Okay, so are we okay with changing that to ten PM?
I, I am.
And I'm okay with that, but does that address public, like schools and that type of thing?
Just commercials, just commercial establishments.
So like, the lights can be on at the school as long as people are at the school.
But what if they're not, what if they're not at the school?
Well, I've talked to superintendent and all three principals about that, so we're working on that.
So that's just, that's not in any of this?
Six point six point six, section B, says recreational lighting shall be turned off by ten o'clock PM except to conclude a specific sporting event that is underway.
So tennis courts, track lines, football.
Parking lots that are on all the time and...
And I've talked to the district about that, so we're working on that.
It says ten PM.
So I do, I finally realized what's going on. You guys are looking at the county draft. I have an old city draft as well that I've been comparing it to, so that's where my other copy came from, so I apologize for that.
Do we want it, which one do we want to use?
They are, they are nearly the same, except the city, old city draft I have has the city code numbers in it. This is all county code number.
Got it.
So let's go off this one, because you guys have this one.
Okay.
Okay, so if we set the ten o'clock curfew, back in special outdoor lighting conditions and standards, D five.
Which is six point six point eight for us.
D five.
Okay.
Says, "The recreational or athletic facility shall extinguish lighting exempted by this section no later than eleven PM." So should that also be ten PM?
Uh, or one hour after the end of play, whichever is earlier.
I think eleven makes sense in that context because of the one hour after the end of play, whichever is earlier. If it were whichever is later, I think ten would be fine, but I think eleven accounts, if something ends at ten, they can have it till eleven. If it ends at eleven, they can only have it till eleven.
Okay.
And then that's in, that wouldn't be in conformance with the earlier provision otherwise, I don't think.
Uh, yeah, the earlier was for residential and commercial, and this one applies to...
Oh, recreational, okay, okay, yep.
So I'm just trying to figure out whether we should match the ten oclogs or not, so I don't really have an opinion on this one.
Was that saying that eleven o'clock is the absolute shut off?
Mm-hmm.
Because this goes on sometimes later, especially with special events.
Yeah, softball goes...
Yeah, sometimes goes to two in the morning. It works with local, but maybe not the other.
So... Can we, can we change this to ten o'clock and then say whichever is later? Or would that get us into deeper trouble?
Then they could play till midnight or one.
Oh, but they're going to play till midnight.
Yeah, they do.
It already says, "No later than eleven PM or one hour after the end of play," so if they end play at midnight.
Whichever is earlier, though.
So if they're playing at midnight, the lights go out at eleven?
Yeah. Oh, I see. It's the whichever is earlier language that makes it different.
Why can't, why do they have to stipulate that? Why can't they just say thirty minutes, thirty minutes after play or something like that? I mean, one hour is a long time after a game.
I like leaving it to eleven PM or half an hour after the end of play, period.
Or?
Not whichever is earlier.
Not whichever is earlier. I don't think that qualifier is necessary.
So it automatically goes out at eleven if it's not being used. If it is being used, then it's thirty minutes after they finish. So if they finish at two in the morning, it goes out at two thirty.
Perfect. I think that's, we have to keep that, I think.
And again, do we need it at eleven or ten?
In that case, I'd be fine making it ten, so it conforms with the rest.
Yeah, I would, too.
Okay, so, "Recreational or athletic facility shall extinguish lighting exempted by this section no later than ten PM or one half hour."
After the end of play.
After the end of play, period.
Yep.
And one half hour should be late enough to get all your kids in coolers and chairs and everything into your car. Okay. And that was about all I had. The last thing that I'd like to talk about is the very last section, six point six point nine. BC. Is it really going to take us five years to get all this done? And I know that the original draft said seven years, I think. Jeanette, do you remember if that was seven years? It's been knocked down to five. Is five going to be, is five going to be as early as we can get it?
Oh, I think so.
I think so.
Okay.
Reasonable.
I think legally, we'd have trouble if it's too long, unfortunately. I mean, ideally, right, we've talked about there's going to be hopefully incentives, and the Dark Skies folks are going to be doing a lot to get people to get their stuff in order earlier than that, but...
Okay.
Do they send a letter to all the businesses as soon as this is adopted? You know, to let them know they got five years?
I would hope so.
Or do they just wait till they read the paper?
David?
City manager?
Well, in a situation like this, it would be the smart move to do some notification ahead of that, or, I mean, it may be in the paper at the same time, but, you know, to actually try to do some proactive outreach about, you need to comply.
I would hope so.
We don't typically notice every possibly affected entity when there's a zone or an ordinance change, but in this kind of case, it's, it, we could easily do some outreach.
Yeah.
Actually, I do have one more thing, just above the five-year cutoff there in part A, about the immediate abatement.
Which one are you on?
Okay. So on the copy that I have from both the city and the county, there's a question mark next to that fifty percent. And I'd like to talk about what that means. It says, "If some kind of alteration, expansion, modification, reconstruction exceeds, equals, or exceeds one thousand five hundred square feet of existing such improvements, whichever is less," and that whole, that whole paragraph, I think, is not very clear. And then we need to decide what that fifty percent means and if we should keep it.
Are they trying to suggest that if there's a remodel done and it reaches fifty percent of the occupancy, work being done, for instance, that they have to conform?
Then it's basically new construction and they have to conform.
If that's what it's saying, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
It's confusing.
Mm-hmm, it's...
Kind of like, like a handicap.
Right.
Situation. If they get too far in the remodel, they just will do it all.
Yeah, that paragraph is really unwieldy.
It is really bad. And I'm okay with the fifteen hundred square feet, and I'm okay with the fifty percent. I just wish that it was not quite so clunky. David, can we leave that up to you?
Oh, sort of try to re-craft some language.
Yeah.
Line it up.
Yeah, I think the numbers are fine, but it's just not written in a way that makes any sense.
Okay.
You could even do like bullets with it, like...
Bullets is a really good idea. I like that. Just visually, it makes it a lot easier to read.
I mean, it's just bullet point.
Sure.
Okay, so that's all I have. And this, again, was comparing the old city draft to the current draft, county draft that you guys are looking at.
Yeah.
I'm still curious, has there been some pushback already from some businesses?
I don't know.
Not that I know. Crystal? Okay. Could you step up for a minute? I do have a question or two for you. You want to state your name for us?
I am Crystal White. I am a part of the Moab Dark Skies crew.
So, go ahead.
I'm, no, I'm totally, I think it's, I think it's an awesome idea, and I, I'm a hundred percent behind it. My question is that there are several businesses that have been here for a while, and they've done some improvements that have actually made it worse.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm thinking, and that's why I'm thinking there might be some pushback.
There probably will be.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a given anytime you change anything.
So you've worked closely with the county, and we have tried to match the county's plan.
Yeah.
Do you have any other suggestions for us?
No, I thought what you just said was better than what we suggested, so, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else we should be thinking about or talking about when we, before we pass this on?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, there's been a lot of consulting and, I think it's really well thought out, so.
Okay.
And you guys obviously get it, so. Any other questions or?
I don't think so. So did you guys notice anything in the draft, the county draft that we need to talk about?
Can I ask one thing on the five-year? Does that, can, the entire ordinance conforms that for five years?
For the entire city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, did the county stick with seven?
No, this draft we have is five for the county, which was, I was glad to see.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you talk about a bonus or anything for like the first business to retrofit or the first new business to comply or?
I know that Moab Dark Skies is planning on doing, we're, we're trying to figure out how to come up with some money to do some rebates for people that retrofit. I think that's mostly for residents, not businesses. But it's definitely something that could, if someone can find the money, that would be beneficial for sure.
Yeah. To, I guess, is it going to be up to business owners to figure out if they are or aren't in compliance themselves? Or is there going to be some sort of city, like consultant person who can come and like evaluate?
I can answer that.
Yeah.
I also work for your sustainability office.
And where?
With Rosemarie.
Oh, right, yeah.
And I'm actually going around and talking to them and offering a free assessment.
Oh, yeah, that, because that's huge.
Wow, that is big, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so it's up to them if they want the assessment or not, but I'm not going to force it on anyone, but it's, it's offered. And we're actually thinking about writing an article for the paper that the city sent us.
I think that'd be really, really good.
That would be awesome.
And, and there are supposed to be audits from the city for compliance. I don't know who's going to do those, but they are in the code.
I think right now it's labeled as, if there is a complaint, then there will be follow-up.
Right.
Yeah, that would be basically the way.
You know, even if there was a plaque they could put on their door that said that this business...
Dark Sky complies.
That's, that's what the sustainability office is working on. Like, they've, they've already got it for the green to gold, so this will just kind of fit right into the green to gold program. And it's a dark sky component, so they'll get a badge for the dark sky stuff.
That's cool.
Cool.
Awesome.
I've had a lot of positive comments about my sticker, by the way.
Spread them around, spread them around. And if you need more, just let us know.
Yeah. I forgot who was asking me where I got it. If I remember, I will let you know.
Yeah, there's a bunch up in the sustainability office now.
Oh, it was Sarah, it was Sarah Stock was asking me where I got it.
She has, Rosemarie has a bunch.
Okay, sweet.
So my eighteen-year-old senior in high school goes, "Oh, where did you get that sticker? That's going on my water bottle." It was Annie, so it was cool. Cool thing, you know?
I don't think I was either.
She has a note that I have one, too. It's a cool thing, and then we, we have more voices.
We're not going to address this one.
Yeah, I just, I mean, my, my thoughts on this, just for the record, it's like, people know I like stand, likes objective standards, and this sets some, and it doesn't leave it to the place of speculation or, oh, that looks really bright, but is it really bright, and is it doing the right thing? And just sort of word of mouth, which I don't think is helpful. And this actually says, if there is a complaint, X, Y, and Z will happen, rather than just being like, well, maybe that's a little brighter, you know, so I think, I think we, we need something like this just generally in our code to just have standards, so.
Yeah, and I think, I believe, last time I talked with the Moab Dark Skies folks, we're going to buy a, a meter, light meter, that actually will tell how many lumens.
Oh, cool.
Business owners really want to know, we can actually measure it.
Wow.
And I've noticed now that the bulbs are switched, like when you go into the hardware store, they list lumens, which is really great.
Yeah.
So with the lumen limit, it's getting there.
Right, cool.
In the packaging, so.
Rather than just watts or?
Yeah. So it's good news all the way around.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you, thank you all for everything you do.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
So any other comments or any other additions or subtractions we need to make from this plan?
I, I like, I like what the county, you're right about the code provisions where we need to match to city code. I like, the county version seems a bit more streamlined than our original document as far as graphics and then just the way that everything is laid out. I do like that. I think it's a little, that paragraph we flagged for David aside, a little more, are these are friendly?
They are, eighty-five percent of it is exactly the same.
Yeah.
I mean, even format-wise, so it's not that big of an issue, I, I hope. So. Anything else? Okay, so we'd like to set up a public hearing for this as soon as we can and move this on.
We'll get it teed up.
Good. Okay, so we have thirty-four minutes, thirty-two minutes to do as we wish. Do you want to give us a staff update? Can we do that here?
I would love to. I would love to do that, and we can certainly, you know, can ask me anything if you want. I will just say, I got a few things for you. First of all, as most of you probably know, we, the city formally hired a new city planning director, Nora Shepherd. She is scheduled to begin next month. She's currently looking for a place to live, shockingly. So she, but, but is definitely on board, and we're excited to have her. She comes with a ton of experience from a number of jurisdictions, including Park Cities, back in the eighties and nineties in Summit County. Worked at Salt Lake City and has been at Saratoga Springs the last year or so. She and her husband and their two small dogs are super excited to come down, so we're really happy about that. You probably have been following the planned affordable development, developments with the city council. The upshot is that they, it looked like the only way they were going to get to a majority vote on it was if the R two was removed from the ordinance in terms of being, having the pad have, be a thing in the R two. So we're working on baking up that version to them, for them, and then not totally sure exactly what will happen to the R two piece of that, if that will end up coming back to the planning commission for further, furtherness, or if that will just be something that is in hibernation for a little while, while we see what happens when pad is implemented in the other, the other, the other commercial zones. The, some of you also know that the, there's an effort that is beginning to get baked up to do long-range regional transportation planning. This is an effort that the city and the county and UDOT have been sort of talking about informally for a number of, for a couple of years, really, and I, UDOT finally said, hey, we'll throw some planning energy at it, and they had a sort of a real informal kickoff meeting at the beginning of the week. And that included San Juan County representatives, actually, to really start to think about what kind of long-range planning do we want to do in our area, and, and what would the, you know, what's the geographic scope of that? What would that include in terms of transit, active transportation, standard transportation vectors? And also really, kind of from a more of a wonky perspective, how do you administer that, right? Like, how do you, like, on the WASC front, there's the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and they are the organization that is tasked with doing regional transportation planning. We don't really have that in our neck of the woods, you know. There's one in Dixie over in, in St. George, but in this, in our part of the state, that kind of organization doesn't exist. So how do we form ourselves to do that, is, was also a part of the question, so it was like this existential question as well. So, you know, that obviously has significant implications for any sort of planning that we do as a city. So more on that as it, as it develops. The future land use map process has begun in that there was an initial advisory committee meeting, kickoff meeting yesterday, yesterday. Very short notice, but because of our timeframe here, to use this process to address the moratorium on overnight accommodations, they wanted to get going as soon as possible. Commissioner Wells sat in on that one, and Commissioner Marion Fels, did I say that right?
Yes.
Thank you. And that was great to have your representation there. So there were city council members, planning and zoning from the city, and then from the county council, planning and zoning, and a couple of members of the public and staff. And so that'll be a committee meeting, a committee that meets probably two or three more times at most, but then what's more relevant is the public open houses that are going to happen in a couple of weeks. Those dates are set. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but one's a noon meeting and the one's like a four to six. The four to six one's on that Tuesday.
Can you send those to us, please?
Oh, for sure. In fact, would it, does it work better, would it work well to send them out as calendar invites? Do you all do the computer calendars? I'll do both, and that way you have it.
Okay.
And then, I'm going to make a note of that. Invites.
Yeah, a calendar invite would be great.
Okay. Okay, so those are going to be happening, like I said, in a couple of weeks, and that'll give Landmark some initial, well, they're actually doing a whole bunch of work already in terms of technical analysis, but this will get them going. And then, really, as you all know, we're on a very tight, relatively tight timeframe to get ordinance is actually passed with regard to the overnight accommodations piece. So that will really drive a lot of the agenda initially, and then the city is still moving forward with this future land use mapping process, kind of very relatedly, but maybe on a slightly longer timeframe, so that we don't have to rush that one as much. But the cool part is, the county council agreed to have the county participate in that process. But the cool part is, the county council agreed to per, have the county participate in that process, so we could really do it as a valley-wide exercise, to the degree that's possible. Um, and Landmark has, um, recent history and current, current projects with San Juan County and SITLA out there. So they have great, um, knowledge about what's happening in the San Juan County part, so they can bring that to bear and also be, um, helpful in communicating with San Juan County about, um, the, having them participate to the degree they wish to in this process.
So David, is the, is this focus and scope on overnight rentals, period?
It's not. It's more than that.
Okay.
It's definitely more than that, but the sort of deliverables are being driven by the need to get those ordinances, um, passed. But no, it is, it is broader than that, for sure.
Okay, and, and I know that I won't be able to make any of the daytime meetings, uh, but I would like to see any of you there that can be there for those meetings and those open houses.
Will they always be during the day?
No, the, the ones that enter in two weeks, one is midday, and then one's gonna be
No, I mean the advisory committee, excuse me.
Oh, um, not necessarily. It doesn't have to be. In fact, I would hope that they would check in with everybody's schedules to at least get us
I would hope that as well, cuz I was there, but that was just by happenstance. I could take that time. Not normally the case, so.
Gotcha. Um, yeah, I get that. Um, and then also, they will at some point come to this regular meeting and present to you all, at least, I would say, a couple of times ahead of, um, needing to get a formal recommendation from you all
Okay.
To go to the council. So they're, they know about needing to engage at this level, and they're, they're, they're good about that.
And that will, whatever recommendations they have, proposed ordinances, that will all come through us through the normal process?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Has to, yep. For sure. So you will get to enjoy that. Uh, last thing was, that Landmark is also in the guts of, uh, working on the east center and west center small area planning process, and I haven't really been following that one too closely. I just know it's happening, and I'm hearing third-hand that the people who are involved in those ends of the, uh, west center and east center are, are pretty, um, happy generally about how it's gone, so. But again, small area plans, that'll come to you all for formal recommendation to go to the council at some point. But that's kinda how, in some ways, this is supposed to be done, right? Like, pick a problem, a problem area, pick a challenging area, an area that needs some love, and say, "All right, let's stick some consulting, uh, efforts on it." And then they do all the, you know, weeds work and bring it to you all, and you all say, "Well, it makes sense, it doesn't make sense," and off it goes. That's, uh, that's what we hope to see happening more. That, I think, is it. Any questions, comments, complaints, compliments?
You do a great job.
Good job. Never solicit that in my, asking for comments. I feel like I've been doing that wrong this whole time, too. Yeah.
So I kind of regret scheduling the workshop at five instead of five-thirty, but we do have this extra time that, um, we can't start the meeting until six. Is there anything else we can do?
Do you wanna talk about our priorities again? You wanna pivot back to that?
Did you get a priorities list last time that you were going to?
And I've given that to Summer, and I'm not sure what has happened with that.
I will ask about that.
Okay. Um, and I do know that Emily's kind of waiting on the land use study and the work that they're being done before we really get moving on things. But, uh, as I said, um, I, I think there are some things that are out there on the table, and you can help me with this that we've seen and have been pushed back, and that I'd like to see again, and one of them was the parking that we talked about today. There's some kind of parking ordinance out there that
Oh, 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 right.
That I think that we could start discussing again.
Definitely.
Well, just to be clear, it's not an ordinance. It would be another plan of some sort, that then you all would give us direction on what you thought we should do in terms of codifying, putting code.
So I'd like to see that again. What else is out there?
What was your main, your, what was your main recom, the first thing you let us?
Fifty-room hotels?
Yeah.
And I think that's gonna come, that's gonna have to come back from the land use.
For sure.
So those priorities like that are gonna have to come from that report and that committee.
Do you know what else that, that came up the other day? I was, I was hiking near a new development, and, um, I, I was hiking on the trail, and, you know, we're gonna be seeing a lot of construction in, in town, and this is for city staff. What I'm finding is that all this new construction, the contractors do not clean up after themselves.
Are you talking about residential or commercial, or both?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah, and I was really upset, because you're like, dude, you just, you know, spent billion, you know, half of, a million dollars on a project, and there's construction trash everywhere.
After it's done?
Yeah, after it's done, after it's open, um, the, um, the retain, you know, the retaining pond in the back, it's the soil's already washed off it, so you can just see the, you know, the pond liner and everything, and I'm like, dude. So is there, is there some kind of mechanism that, you know, dude, clean up after yourself?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's, there's a couple different ways to go about it, but the best way to do that, the best way to get at that would be just quickly document it, either with photos or an email, and send it on to, probably to Mona to start, cuz it really would be a code violation.
That's definitely, it was, it's pretty amazing. I was totally blown away.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we could address it that way probably pretty quickly. Mona's very good about
Yeah.
Being on top of that.
I would, it, because we're gonna see more of that, unfortunately, I think.
I will say, I, yeah, I sh, I don't doubt that at all. Chuck is particularly focused on ensuring that we have some consistency with regard to job sites and construction sites. So having that post-completion follow-up, um, be a part of that calculation, a part of that thinking, I get that, that's very important. So ju, documents, send it our way, we'll deal with it.
I'll send pictures.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. That goes out there in the public, too. Send pictures. Yeah.
My mom, okay.
Exactly.
Anything else?
Hmm. Lighting now that, for, it's still the complaint mechanism for things that are too bright, or that don't have the proper shielding, or anything like that. I've gotten some just word-of-mouth complaints about some properties in town that have maybe recently opened that have really exceptionally, just the way that the lights, I think, are structured, or pointed, or something. So I haven't had a chance to, like, go check it out myself, but the mechanism is still to code enforcement.
Absolutely.
And we have a new code enforcement officer, correct?
We do? Along with Mona?
Oh, you mean on the police side?
Might be on the police.
Yes.
On the police side.
Yes, that's exactly right. Karen Kruger went over to, um, she's our new victim advocate, and it, she was, at least in part, part of her job to do, um, some enforcement work. So yes, we hired a new officer to do that work. Um, and we're still thinking through, just for what it's worth, as a staff and as a council, I think, to structurally how we do code enforcement, what makes the most sense. You know, a couple of council members have said, "Well, maybe we should have more people doing code enforcement, cuz ultimately that's what it will take, um, to be more proactive in some of these cases." So we're still thinking through that, and, and it's also like, is it, should they be in the police department? How much of it stays in, kind of, planning and zoning, and?
Oh, one more thing. This is really cool. So today I picked up, um, I took my, um, my cardboard over to the recycling center, and you know how that's been, it's been kind of a, stuck in our craw for a while? You guys, it was so clean over there, I didn't think I could actually put cardboard over there. The entire thing, there is not a speck of cardboard.
I've heard rumor about that, but I don't want that to be on record.
Okay. They are, it's so clean right now, it's amazing. I mean, everything is, you could, I mean
Yeah, it is.
It's amazing. And the attitude of the gentleman that I was working with yet today, he was, we just talked for a few minutes, and he was totally on it.
Oh, that's great.
So if you wanna pass that on.
And they are accepting paperboard and cartons and things like that?
And they're thinking about doing a, a flow and all kinds of stuff, so I was totally blown away.
That's great.
Totally blown away, so, yeah.
So if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn the workshop, and then, um, we have to come back together at six o'clock, start the meeting. Sorry for this lapse of time, but
It's okay.
Okay, so I'm joining, joining the workshop. Thank you, everybody.
Quick break.
Okay, I'll call the order of the March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Moab Planning Commission at six P.M. Uh, first item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. This is for items not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please fill out a public comment sheet that can be found in the hall. Is there anybody here for citizens to be heard? Okay, moving on. Uh, approval of minutes. We have the minutes for February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I noticed on the minutes there weren't outcomes for the last three agenda items. It looks like we just need to go back and write the outcomes of those three.
It was lacking the outcomes, did I say?
Yeah, lacking the outcomes. So, planning resolution three twenty nineteen, four twenty nineteen, and five twenty nineteen are lacking outcomes for February the fourteenth. So I'd like to post, uh, postpone approval until the next meeting.
Well, um, for what it's worth, is that not documented in the discussion part up above?
Uh, no.
I can't tell.
The discussion is discussing action item number
Two, right.
Yeah. And there's, there's really no minutes then for
For four, five, and six.
For four, five, and six, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I move that we postpone it until the minutes are present and the outcomes.
So I do, do I have a second on the table?
I'll second it on tabling the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Table the minutes. Okay, uh, item number five and item number six have been withdrawn from the agenda. Do I need to say anything more about that? The applicant has withdrawn the petition or the application to rezone.
Right. It may come back, it may morph, but either way, it would require a new noticing to the, um, to peripheral property owners.
Okay. And so we are on to action item number seven, the public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten, and ordinance amending the zoning for property located at seven seventy-eight West Kane Creek Boulevard in the RA one residential agricultural zone to Z, C one commercial residential zone, and amending the city of Moab official zoning map. I open the public hearing at six oh three. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the proposed ordinance? We're talking about the Kane Creek rezone, if you're, if you're interested in speaking about the Kane Creek rezone.
Oh, I thought we were gonna have it until six o'clock. My name's Keith Herman.
Okay, so
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind, would you please go grab a paper in the hall and just write your name on it?
This is the applicant, so we can hear from the applicant later, right?
Whenever you want.
Okay, so how about if we close the public hearing, and then we can hear from you when we're talking about the actual rezone?
Oh, I didn't know, I put my poster up on the line, and then it said that we're gonna have a meeting at six o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, but, um, and I didn't know whether I should attend or not attend.
Yeah, so just hang on a minute, um, and I think that I will close the p, public hearing at six oh four, and then we'll bring you up in just a minute to speak on it. Okay, so action item number eight, planning resolution twenty, sorry, planning resolution zero eight twenty nineteen, resolution recommending approval of the zoning map amendment for property owned by Keith Herman from RA one to C one, and amending the city of Moab official zoning map. Staff summary? Does anybody have a staff summary for us?
Summary, is there anything on this?
It's, uh, we have the, um, agenda, the agenda cover, um, summary sheet. Do you wish for me to just give you a quick overview of it, or?
Sure.
Hey, uh, uh, yeah, well, I only have a question about this. So
Could you give an overview first?
Go ahead, go into your overview.
Yeah, just very quickly, um, the applicant has historically used this property as a bed and breakfast. Um, I believe that it, um, was, it's been a legal non-conforming use for many years, um, and they, uh, I believe, or, uh, like, the applicant can speak for himself, but my understanding is attempting to sell the property and wants to get the zoning in conformance before that happens in order to be able to sell it and have the bed and breakfast be able to be, uh, a legal use moving forward. Because there was a gap in time from when it was a legal non-conforming use, um, till now, that, um, you know, the way the code and the rules work, if there's a long enough gap, then that legal non-conforming use lapses, and so that has lapsed. So in order to bring, bring it up and do, um, be legal, this zoning, uh, request was made, the zoning change request was made by the applicant.
So just let me be clear, uh, any time a property is, no, never mind, that was a conditional use question I had. So in order for this property to be a bed and breakfast, after it is sold, it needs to be a C one.
It need, correct, it, yeah, at, at least.
Because there was a lapse in time of when it was being used for the non-conforming use.
Right.
It was a legal non-conforming use. When that use dissists, if the time period passes, you, basically, that vested non-conforming right goes away.
Correct.
Which is one year, right?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How, are we speaking now?
Um. Mr. Herman, would you like to come up and speak with us about this? And just state your name for us.
I'm Keith Herman. I apologize for not recognizing anybody. I was here twenty years ago in the upper building, asking permission to build a bed and breakfast. And my wife and I had this, um, dream, and we had come down in Moab many times. We liked the golf course, we liked the hike and bike. We found wonderful people down here, and she'd inherited some money, and we thought we'd just buy some property and have a retirement home. And she got to, talking to the lady next to us, at that time was Terry and Jerry Ger, uh, Terry and Wally Gerard, and they had the hair, blue hair and bed and breakfast. And that was a spark in our head that, maybe we oughta do that. So we quit the best jobs we had, and we moved down here on the property, and, uh, we started building it. And when I say we, she and I built the entire property by ourselves. We had the concrete slab board, the cabinets were built by another company in-house, and a group of guys put the color coat on it, but those three things, we didn't do. So that structure was our dream come true, and we got the bed and breakfast license, and at that time, the bed and breakfast license was a cottage business out of a residence. So like, if I was having a quilting business or a pottery business, it was considered a cottage business out of a residence. Oh, I'm sorry. And now the rules have changed, okay? But, um, um, well, actually, what happened was, um, we ran the place for the first few months after we opened, and then the following year, we had a complete year, and we made plans for, uh, New Year's, and she passed away the day before, and my life kind of come to an end. And so it was a struggle for a couple of years, and actually, it went on for four years before I got smart enough to hire some people to help me. But I didn't want anybody in the house. It was just the whole thing. But I managed to hold on and to make it work, and the world come to see me, and, uh, they found themselves loving the adobe boat. I had a German group come back for eight years in a row, so I must've been getting something right. And then, at one point, I saw my taxes go up, uh, about eighteen hundred dollars one year, and I asked why the big change. Well, you're in a commercial business. But they did change me to commercial. I was still a cottage business and under bed and breakfast rules and regulations. Long and short of that is, I was in the bed and breakfast business a long time. Usually, you can only put up with tourists for about seven to ten years, and you've answered every I don't wanna use hard, but stupid questions. I'll, I'll relate one to you really quickly. My stupidest question was a lady, one morning I had two plates full of food, and she stopped me in the aisleway and asked me how many arches hadn't they found? And she was serious, and you know, the first reaction you have is just drop the plates, and and I didn't know what to do, and I said, "Most of them." And she turned around and perfectly happy.
Oh, yeah.
And I went over, I went over and put the two plates down, and these people that were from Japan, who didn't speak really good English, and they asked me, "You haven't found them all?" And I had fourteen people for breakfast that morning. It was this crescendo of
Oh, my.
Oh, my.
And I apologize, but that, I'm a little nervous. But anyway, the point being is, is that I maintained the bed and breakfast and was quite successful at it, and I had employees for five and six-year runs with me, um, and some of them are now working for the city. And it was a deal that I tried to make the dream work, when it was a tragedy for me. And after 17 years and all the things that were going on, I had a couple of health issues here recently, and we were kind of winding down, thinking, what are we gonna do? And when I decided to shut the business down, I forfeited my license, and then I reworked my finances, because it's really difficult to get out of business. It's a lot easier to get into business than it is to get out. But I had to redo all that, and in doing so, that forfeiture didn't allow me to take in grandfather for someone to come in. So everybody who has, I've had several, I, well, I count five of them, that have wanted to come down, but they recognize it as a being a bed and breakfast. And that's what their ambition is. That's what it was built for. That's what it was for a long time. And I relate a story, that when we first come down here, we started, uh, building the bed and breakfast, and we'd hiked up on the rim, and it's this huge slab of concrete. It was monstrous size, it's 4,600 square feet. And people thought it was gonna be the kids' skate park. This structure is the, one of the first structures ever built in Moab out of steel. The whole framework is steel. Well, that was galvanized, so then when they saw that up, they thought it was gonna be the women's prison. And we told people, it's a bed and breakfast. Okay? We got it sheathed in the OSB board on it, and they thought it was gonna be the equestrian park. Every time we'd go have something for lunch or run into somebody at the grocery store, they had another story. And so the issue was, we kept trying to tell them, we're building a bed and breakfast. And the long and short of it is, is that, that's what it was, that's what it was built to be. And for me to take and go to the next chapter in my life, I need to have a rule change, because I was under cottage rules, and now it's zoning rules, and a C1 would make it possible for someone to come in and do a bed and breakfast. And that would, that's my reasoning. Thank you for your time.
Awesome, thank you. I understand that was a pretty cool place for a bunch of local weddings, and ex-mayor Dave actually officiated a lot of them.
I apologize, I, I might...
It sounded like a wonderful place for local weddings.
Well, my return guest rate was huge, and people who have come there, I've sponsored the Arts Festival, uh, it's Celtic Festival, uh, and that type of thing, so they love coming to the place. It's a great place for weddings, I've had several there. And, um, I had the Arts Festival, or the Music Festival for about nine years, and, I've had bagpipes in the house, which are really loud, so they went out on the back patio, people from Bartlett were coming over wanting to know why I didn't turn the music down. And, um, you know, Paul Waddell and Christian Layer were back there just doing crazy stuff. One time, Paul Waddell was practicing in the house, and I would yell at him, hey, how about some bluegrass? And he would just go to bluegrass right out of Mozart. And then I'd go Elton John, and he'd do that, the phone rang, and he came over and said, hold this, and he handed me his Stradivarius. My feet wouldn't move, and he's on the phone for several minutes, and he looked at me, what's the matter with you? And I'm going, didn't you tell me this is a Stradivarius? He says, yes. He says, it's insured for $2 million. So those are some of the wonderful things that happen. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's what it was, it's what my wife's dream was. Yeah, she was only 46 when she passed.
Okay.
I'll dwell on that. I'm gonna dwell on my new future.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, do we have any discussion about this zone change?
Yeah.
I have not looked at the zone map, the city's zone map.
I mean, C1 is our, you know, there's, there's very little of it.
I can tell you, that on the east of me is a rental property. Across the street is Moab Adventure Industrial. There's a man named Mick who lives in Seattle most of the year. Uh, he's an Englishman, he has a motorcycle shop on the other section where the big mercury tower's at. Nature Conservancy's in my backyard, and then that whole meadow behind me is never gonna be developed, because that's all nature conservancy. And so I don't really, I have all my own parking, I have overflow parking, it's, it was well-planned, and it's, it's an acre and a tenth, so...
I think on his side of the street, isn't it all RA1, and then the other side's like an industrial...
I'll pull up a map.
Yeah, it's RA1 until it gets to, uh, I.
Yeah.
And then it's R3 and R2.
Right.
So this is just for this one piece of property? This is not a code change for people that are RA1?
Correct, this only would apply to this one parcel.
Yeah. So, looking at, just looking at the relevant code provisions, things that would be allowed now, if it were to be a C1, you have things like bed and breakfast, multi-family housing would also be allowed, when it wouldn't otherwise be in the RA zone that it's in now. Let's see what else, I'm just doing a little summary.
Veterinary clinics.
Those are allowed in RA1. Financial institutions, uh, group homes were already allowed, uh, hospitals would be allowed now. Otherwise, there's a lot of similarity between RA and C1. There are no overnight accommodations, except for licensed bed and breakfasts that would, breakfasts is, breakfast that would be allowed. And then you would have the addition of allowing multi-family housing, rather than just single family with an ADU, which is how it is now in RA1. Which I see as a benefit, looking at, you know, future, obviously, if we're looking at a zone change, it's not just the proposed use of the proposed buyer, we wanna, anything that could feasibly happen there, we wanna think about. And then retail establishments, too, which otherwise there wouldn't be now. Those are the big, I think, the big, um, changes between RA and C1. But we do talk about C1 a lot as being a zone that we would like more around town. There really, there's that tiny little portion of it that exists now, but, I mean, if we're talking about future of Moab, we want more multi-family housing, small retail, mixed use, and C1 really provides the opportunity for a lot of that.
I agree, I think it's a good area to even eventually, the whole strip, you see one, because the parcels are larger, more parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you've shown that it'll continue on as a bed and breakfast. The lifespan of a house is about 300 years, one made of concrete and steel is probably much longer than that. And I think it's in a great location for a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, I agree.
And do we have any issues with zoning a spot?
Any what?
No, people hate to call it spot zoning, but...
That's, that's my, my thing. And then I also don't think, I, I don't want to set that precedent for me, I just don't.
For what it's worth, you know, when you look at the map, that, we see that, it's not, um, it's not, in a perfect world, an ideal approach, of course, but, um, I don't think, from a legal standpoint, it's indefensible, yeah.
Okay. Joe, could you close the door or push those folks?
Yeah, keep the door open.
Oh, no, probably not. Well, thank you.
Which resolution is this?
Forgot.
What's the resolution, I'm not sure if we approve it?
So, any other discussion?
I did. Fifteen windows open.
Okay, can I call for a motion?
Um, I move that we approve resolution eight, uh, 2019, recommending the approval of a zoning map amendment for property owned by Keith Herman from RA1 residential agricultural zoning to C1 commercial residential zoning, and amending the City of Moab official zoning map.
Do I have a second?
I second, uh, Marian's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So want to post? Okay, motion pass?
So we have favorably recommended it to City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably going to be the next chapter in my life, but you've saved this man, you know? Good luck. I was more scared here than I must have been down.
Oh.
Okay, um, future agenda items. Nobody knows.
What do you want to do? Oh, is it my, is this to me? Um, well, there's certainly a bunch of applications that are still in process.
Okay.
That are, um, probably coming your way. I can't list them off the top of my head necessarily, and wouldn't want to promise what's on the next agenda, per se, but I would hope that we will bake up the, um, the lighting item for the next, um, well, so I'm trying to think, if we have enough time to advertise it for the next meeting, then we will, but otherwise, it would be the following meeting.
We should do that, so Kalen doesn't get mad at us.
Don't want that.
Uh, one thing that I would like to include on the agenda, at least for the next couple of months, is an update from the Land Use Committee, for whoever's in the...
Oh, for the future land use map?
Yeah. Whether that comes from staff or from the folks who are in those meetings, I'd like to see that on our agenda.
Great. Really, the hope is that the planning commissioners take that on, um, for both planning commissions, uh, in terms of just updating and being of the communication vector, but...
Right.
Obviously, can support that as staff.
Okay. And I think that we can put that on the agenda, and you guys can give us updates to if and when you're able to sit in those meetings.
Definitely.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for the future agenda items? Okay, so we've got the big two off our desk, we've got the downtown plan and the lighting. As soon as we get that public hearing done, those will be done, so congratulations to us, getting those out of the way. All right. Uh, if there's anything else that needs to be discussed for the good of the commission, I will adjourn the meeting. Okay, meeting's adjourned at 6:22.
Rachel, see how painless that was? We're so painless.